Welcome to a meeting of your Planning Commission, the official local planning agency for the cities of Tampa, Temple Terrace, Plant City, and unincorporated Hillsborough County. The Planning Commission provides innovative leadership and long-range vision that contributes to the creation of a thriving prosperous community that offers opportunity, fairness, and choice in how we live, move, learn, work, and play. For more information about the Planning Commission, please call 813-272-5940. Follow us on social media or visit our website at planhillsborough.org.
Welcome, everybody, to the May 12, 2025 Public Hearing of the Planning Commission on City of Tampa Comprehensive Plan Amendments. We thank you for attending this meeting. Your comments and participation are encouraged. For those attending in person and wishing to speak on any agenda item, please sign the register at the rear of the room and turn off any devices that may be a distraction. To minimize feedback in the audio, all online participants in the meeting will be muted until it is their opportunity to speak. Planning Commissioners should unmute themselves to indicate that they would like to speak. Please be sure to state your name at the beginning of your remarks for the benefit of the clerk. There will be an opportunity for members of the public to provide comments. When your name is called, you will be unmuted when it is your turn to speak. Please wait until the chair calls on you to begin speaking. State your name at the beginning of your comments and adhere to the time limits. If anyone has difficulties or is watching via HTV and would like to provide comments to be included in the record for the local government hearing, please email them to planner@plancom.org. For those who are not familiar with our process, the meeting will be conducted as follows. The agenda item will be introduced. Staff will give their presentation with a 15-minute time limit. The applicant will be given the opportunity to make a presentation with a 15-minute time limit. Following presentations, members of the public may address the Planning Commission when recognized by the chairman. Public comment will be heard for three minutes per person. The applicant will be afforded a three-minute period for rebuttal response. Planning Commissioners will then ask questions. Then, public comment will be closed. Then, upon a motion, a second and a discussion of vote will be taken. To all participants, please note that tonight's hearing concerns proposed changes to the comprehensive plan. Presentations should not include matters related to zoning applications and site plans that are not before the commission. Zoning conditions are not relevant to plan amendments and may not be considered by the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission's purview in making a recommendation is limited to consistency or inconsistency with the comprehensive plan. With that, I'd like to ask the clerk to please go ahead and call roll.
Good evening. Bowden?
Here.
Buzzer?
Here.
Cardenas?
Here.
Kona?
Here.
Cress?
Here.
Lauk?
Here.
Soraya?
Here.
Orton?
Here.
Rodriguez?
Here.
And Chair Joseph?
Here.
You have a quorum, sir.
Thank you. All right. Our first agenda item, I'm actually going to go a little bit out of order here and call up 2B. We had a, I think there's going to be a request for a continuance made, so 2B, TACPA 24-18, Comprehensive Plan Map Amendment, 84 Davis Boulevard. Turn your mic on. Thank you. Is that better?
Good evening. My name is Tyler Hudson. My address is 400 North Ashley Drive. I'm the attorney for the applicant on 2B. We'd like to request a continuance to August 11th. I know we have a pretty full house here, so I want to apologize to folks for the lateness of this. We did get the word out to as many people as we could as early as we could, but candidly, that was only a couple hours ago, so apologize to the folks who came down. Not aware of any opposition to the continuance request, but happy to answer any questions that you guys might have.
All right. Thank you very much. Is that a good timeframe, August 11?
That would be aligned with our next cycle for the city of Tampa.
All right. To the commissioners, do you have any questions?
I do have a procedural question. Do they get an automatic one-time extension or continuance, or how does this work?
They're allowed to request up to two continuances, and this is the applicant's second continuance request.
Is there a timeframe for when they need to submit this by, or it can be at any time before the hearing?
It can be at any time before the hearing.
Okay. Thanks.
All right. And we're going to need a vote on this, correct, Tracy? Yeah. All right. Motion and a vote. I'll open it up to motions. Commissioner Buzzer?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to move that we accept the continuance for TACPA 24-18, 84 Davis Boulevard, and allow them to go to the next cycle.
Second.
All right. We have a motion to approve the continuance, accept the continuance. Yes, Mr.?
Can I just clarify that that is a continuance to the August 11 hearing?
Yeah. So a motion for a continuance to the August 11 hearing and a second to that, a motion by Commissioner Buzzer, a second to that motion by Commissioner Kona. Are there any questions or comments from the commissioners before we take our vote? Would all signify their agreement by saying aye? Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, commissioners.
All right. Okay. So jumping back to our first item of business is 2A, TACPA 24-04, Comprehensive Plan Text Amendment, Tampa Future Land Use Section and Update. And the presenters are Jennifer Malone and Melissa Dickens.
I'm here to present on TACPA 24-04. This is the Tampa Comprehensive Plan Update, Future Land Use Section. I just want to start with the disclaimer. We all received a lot of emails ever since this draft was republished for the public. Anything that was received before Friday was placed in a SharePoint folder on our website, any emails. You've also received some printouts of anything that was received over the weekend. Until I walked in this room, I was still receiving emails. Those were a little late to get printed for the Planning Commissioners, but they are on the folder. So they're still in the SharePoint folder on our website for document retention purposes, and so you could still peruse those if you'd like. But there might have been some that didn't get printed because I was still receiving them moments before I walked in. This is a, I just want to go through a quick refresher on the Comprehensive Plan Update in the Future Land Use Section. We are back after April 7, where we received some direction from this board. Just as a reminder, this is a wholesale review and revision to the Future Land Use Section. Through this update, we're going to streamline, consolidate the language. We started with a visioning process in the year 2022. We did a citywide survey, collected as many responses as we could to try and understand how the community wanted to see the city in 2045. We consulted an outside expert to help us out, provide some data and analysis, as well as some policy suggestions, and they provided multiple assessments that are all linked in your packet. We worked very closely with the city staff and the stakeholders. There was outreach conducted at multiple phases throughout this, as well as just recently, following April 7, we did more outreach. We've briefed this item to the Planning Commission and Tampa City Council in September. And the draft before you tonight, and that we'll be running through, incorporates the Planning Commission direction from April 7. I just want to also point out, there is still time to participate, for the public to participate in this process. This is a public hearing process. We're still taking feedback from the community, hence the emails that we were receiving, and things that they would like everyone to understand. And so again, I just, for the record, the draft was briefed to the Planning Commission and Tampa City Council in September. The concepts I'm going to go through at the beginning of the presentation have largely remained the same. I'm just providing them as a refresher. At the end of the presentation, Melissa Dickens is going to talk about what we changed based on the Planning Commission feedback. The first concept that we're introducing, this is a big concept for the plan update, are proposed place types. So we want to direct growth to the places where it makes sense, in the areas of the city that we think have that capacity to handle the growth, either through bonuses or through higher-density future land use designations. That high-growth concept is our, those are typically our regional activity centers. So that's the CBD, the Central Business District, that's downtown, there's a lot of growth happening here, that's a good thing, as well as the Westshore Business District, they have a very high future land use category, a lot of office and retail development already, and then the Fowler Vision Area. The Planning Commission completed a study concurrent with, in coordination with the county and the city, and we're really implementing that study through this place type. Another regional activity center are transit supportive development areas. In short, those are areas with fixed guideway rail in the future, and currently, that's essentially the Ebor Streetcar. So the area kind of around that periphery, because we want to link increased density with transit options. Transit-ready corridors is our next tier of place type. That's our middle tier, so that's promoting density along our corridors, typically our arterial roadways. We would hope to have good transit on those in the future. And then context-sensitive neighborhoods, those are areas in the city that are really experiencing the pressures of infill and redevelopment, and we needed some policy language to recognize their unique character as the city is changing rapidly. Through the plan update, we've also proposed a new density bonus structure. There's an affordable housing density bonus, two tiers of a transit bonus, transit-ready corridors, as well as transit supportive development areas. There's a green bonus, and these bonuses can all be stacked. So lots of options. We heard that through a lot of our surveying, that people want certainty in the development process, and they also wanted some options to achieve the maximums. So these bonuses can be stacked, but they cannot exceed a bonus ceiling. Another concept is the industrial preservation map. In the plan today, it talks about industrial very broadly. All industrial is good industrial. The city is changing, industrial is changing, and so the Planning Commission staff took a look at this and proposed some areas of the city where industrial should really be preserved, and some policy direction, as well as this map. So that's typically like the Port Activity Center, the area in the east of the city. This does not include any industrial that's in the Fowler area. We have the Tampa Industrial Park kind of in the north part of the city, because that's a growth area for residential, and we think that there's a lot more opportunities up there. Another concept that we heard a lot from the community about was neighborhood-serving commercial. There's two changes proposed to locational criteria. Locational criteria is already in the plan. So there's already some recognition and consideration for neighborhood-serving commercial uses in residential districts. But we decided to broaden that, based on feedback from the community, to allow consideration of commercial neighborhood uses in more places in the residential 10 category. So in that future land use category, if a site fronts two collector or arterial roadways, so at the corner of a busy intersection, they could be considered now for some neighborhood commercial uses. There's also an underutilized future land use category, well, three of them, neighborhood mixed use. It's a little limited where that can be applied today, but through this update, it will be broadened for those categories to be considered citywide, provided that they align with the scale of development in the surrounding area. This is one that we've heard a lot about recently, and this is adopted in the plan today. So today, residential 10 is typically a single-family detached neighborhood. It's actually the most pervasive future land use designation in the city of Tampa. A lot of the city is residential 10. But as you see, in the category description, it says that limited townhouses and duplexes are also enabled in this future land use designation. Staff always looks at LU Policy 9.3.5, and that has helped staff understand the policy, or that is the policy direction that staff has utilized on where these uses can be considered. So typically, on the periphery of an established, single-family neighborhood. As you all can see, it's not very clear. We heard a lot from folks about housing choices, housing opportunities, certainty about where these uses would be through the process. So through that outreach, there was a proposal to create some criteria. The criteria is on your screen. This is the proposed criteria that would allow townhomes or duplexes, single-family attached, single-family semi-detached to be considered if it fronts a roadway, functionally classified as a collector or higher, if it's adjacent to a parcel designated with a higher-density or intensity flu designation, or is located within a transit-ready corridor. There's also a limit on the FAR built in here, and as well as a compatibility statement, because we want to make sure that these fit within the neighborhood, that that missing middle style and the neighborhood scale is still retained. And we want to make sure that these are happening in the right areas. There's also a roundup density calculation in this proposal. That just means that the applicant can request to go to the next higher unit. So an example I've been using a lot, because we like nice whole numbers, is if your parcel is like 0.56 acres, and you're in the residential 10 category, I take 0.56 times 10, 5.6. Now, typically, we round down, so that would be five units. Because due to this policy, based on this policy direction, if the criteria is met, that development could round up to the next whole unit, so that would be six units, if they're not in the coastal high-hazard area. That is a very important distinction. We are retaining the density within the coastal high-hazard area under this policy. We have looked very closely at that, and there is no roundup provision in the coastal high-hazard area, but there would be a mixture of housing types. So this map displays, and I know it's a little hard to see because the city is very large, displays where that could occur. So the red is where the roundup would not happen. The red is where that housing style would be able to be achieved through a rezoning, but there would be no roundup because those parcels are in the coastal high-hazard area. The blue is where parcels that meet the criteria that I just had on the last page, and the gray do not meet it at all. So we're really trying to focus this policy direction to the periphery of neighborhoods, to areas near transit-ready corridors, while retaining that scale and compatibility. This is a policy direction, a policy for the plan, and we're thinking long-term. Where should the city be in 2045? What types of housing? How can that be encouraged in the comprehensive plan? Finally, there were some category revisions, simplifying the mixed-use categories, as well as refreshing the bonus options and maximums. Just, for one, we needed to simplify the name, because a lot of our mixed-use categories can do density or FAR, and so that's a little confusing when your mixed-use, when your category has a number assigned to it. There's also a provision, and this is based on feedback from the community, from Tampa City Council, about density in the coastal high-hazard area would be 30 dwelling units an acre, but outside of the coastal high-hazard area would remain at the 35. There's a bonus option for those properties outside of the coastal high-hazard area to go up to 70 units an acre. This is just one example, but we've made this tweak on all of our categories. I will turn it over to Melissa Dickens now to talk about what we've changed since April 7. Thank you.
Good evening, commissioners. Melissa Dickens, Planning Commission staff. So wanted to share a little bit about our approach in bringing forward this language back to you this evening. We did go back and listen to the meeting and take the direction from April 7, what you all suggested. We also held additional meetings with stakeholders, primarily the folks who asked to meet with us over the past month in full transparency, were the development community. The final draft that we have before you is a bit of a balance. It incorporates feedback from multiple iterations of public input, multiple drafts, and diverse perspectives. We're trying to balance the competing needs of everyone who has participated in this process, and so what we've arrived at is really trying to strike that balance. So the first item that was changed was the definition for, excuse me, the first item that was changed was, there were some concerns about the specific percentage for the vertically-integrated mixed use. We heard some feedback and determined that this would really be more appropriate for the LDC. There was a discussion of a mix of different options or a menu of options, and that's really something that we believe belongs in the Land Development Code. We've also removed the prohibition on plan amendments in the coastal high-hazard area, so applicants would have the opportunity to apply. We have established the Westshore Business District Regional Activity Center as a coastal development area. We've also made some minor clarification on policy wording, just to correct a couple of typos. And then we've also updated the definition of overriding public interest and revised the policies. We wanted to make it clear when city council makes that determination, and when it's something outside of their purview. So wanted to share what the adopted coastal high-hazard area language says today. This is in the adopted plan today. It's a little nebulous, but it says, "direct future population concentrations away from the CHHA, so as to achieve a no-net increase in overall residential density." In practice, staff has applied that very similarly to how we are revising the language to read. So the updated CHHA language states that no plan amendments for parcels within the CHHA should increase the maximum residential density or intensity beyond what is currently allowed by the flu category. And then there are also opportunities for exceptions that have been built in. The lands that are identified in the coastal development areas map, I'll show that on the next slide, lands within the TU and GMU, future land use categories, these are intended to be transitional land use categories, and then any publicly-initiated plan amendments that meet the definition of overriding public interest. And this map here shows the updated coastal development areas. You can see Westshore added in in the red, and then the green is the coastal high-hazard area. We have the same policies that were utilized for consistency last time, those are in your resolution. Staff recommends the Planning Commission find TACPA 24-04 consistent with the Tampa Comprehensive Plan and forward this recommendation to Tampa City Council. This concludes our presentation, and we are available for questions. Thank you.
All right. Did the city of Tampa have anything they wanted to say, or they're just here for questions? Questions, all right. Then we will take it over to the public comment on this item. We had quite a few people sign up, so start to go through it. I will start with Carol Ann Bennett.
Hi, my name is Carol Ann Bennett. I urge you to find this inconsistent. South Tampa, where I've lived my entire life and I'm an expert on, has had no problem whatsoever increasing its density under the current future land use. The area south of Gandy alone has doubled its number of units under the current land use. It does not need increased capacity of any kind, and I think that it's irresponsible to increase the density in such an area that is so vulnerable. I urge you to find this plan inconsistent, but I urge you also to vote on it tonight. Whether you vote consistent or inconsistent, vote on it. Let's move this forward. I've been to every meeting for the last three years about this. I have read every version of every draft. I'm probably one of a handful of people in this room who've done that. Please, let's move it forward, whether it's consistent or inconsistent. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bennett. I see Stephanie Pointer on the list also. She's in here.
Good evening, Stephanie Pointer. You know, I got to agree with Carol Ann. It's funny, because we didn't have a conversation about it, but I wrote in my notes, not CHH It's funny, because we didn't have a conversation about it, but I wrote in my notes, not CHHA set in stone in the land use table. And the current maps are already outdated. In table number three, it says we're going to grandfather it in to the 2021. We have a lot more data since 2021, and when this is updated, the CHHA is not going to get smaller, it's going to get larger. And this is absolutely offensive to me. And no, I would like to state for the record, I do not live in the CHHA. My neighborhood is built up, but I do live in an area surrounded by the CHHA. And I'm glad to have new neighbors with smart development, not ridiculousness. And anybody can find my phone number anytime they want. All you have to do is Google me. Feel free to give me a call if you have a debate, if you want to talk to me, and not wait until after I'm gone. Thank you. Oh, and vote on this tonight. Quit playing with it.
Thank you, Ms. Pointer. All right. Next up, we have Lindy Ellett.
I brought a couple visual aids. I don't know if you can see them up there. But I have a quick statement, and then I'll explain some of this. So, good evening, Planning Board. My name is Lindy Ellett, and I live at 3914 West Tacon Street. My family has lived in Virginia Park since 2016, and I'm here tonight to speak in opposition of the proposed rezoning of our single-family residential area to allow for townhomes and duplexes. I fully understand the need for housing diversity and affordability. However, this particular proposal overlooks the critical safety and infrastructure concerns that directly impact the people who live in our neighborhood, especially our children. Our neighborhood is home to many young families, and more move to this neighborhood consistently thanks to the excellent schools we're zoned for. Everyday, children walk, bike, scooter, and play in and around our streets. Homemade pickleball courts, basketball games, lemonade stands are met with dog walkers and other elderly people roaming the neighborhood, also people training for half marathons. And I would also like to say that our neighborhood lacks a lot of basic infrastructure, primarily sidewalks. So all this activity is taking place in the street. And while I don't, I'm going to speak on this black area that's in this rectangle, because this is where I live. And I want to explain how this is going to affect me and our family personally. So I live on this yellow star, and this is all being proposed for multifamily homes and townhomes and duplexes. And what happens with the flow of traffic, and you wouldn't know if you didn't live here, is that if you put more density in here, church is going to get more busy, and to turn out onto churches is going to become more difficult. There's no left turn arrow here. So, and you can't turn left on Dale Mayberry, you might die. So you got to come up here to turn, and what this is going to do is going to back up church. It's going to cause people to cut through, where all this activity I just described is taking place. And that makes me nervous, and I even went through today and made a diagram of where we're missing sidewalks. Everything in red, there is no sidewalk. So because there's so many young children in our neighborhood, there's actually 32 children on my block alone, just my block. Makes me really nervous to have more people driving our streets. So tonight, I just ask that you guys vote to find this plan inconsistent. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. I'm going to try a name here. They didn't really say what they wanted to speak about, and they might not be in the room, but Andy Spicola? Andy Spicola, going once, going twice? No? All right. Next up is Steve Michelini.
Good evening, Commissioner Steve Michelini. I had sent an email over, and I was one of those late senders that sent it to Jennifer. But basically, we had meetings with the Planning Commission staff. We only had one week to review the new drafts, and so many of the proposed changes, they incorporate typical zoning code issues, and I know that the staff has tried to separate those, so that you didn't have LDC issues co-mingled with the land development code. But there's too many dramatic changes. The city has been built on development and redevelopment, and if you start shutting that down, then they may as well start looking at increases in your taxes. There simply is no other solution. Development pays for infrastructure as it goes along, including the redevelopment of properties. Just saying no is not a solution, and it just creates a problem. The more dialogue is needed regarding these alternatives, and reasonable alternates, as well as mitigation measures, need to be built into this plan. I didn't see them, but we did talk about them in our last meeting. The comprehensive plan and the land development issues have been mixed together, and they need to be separated out. The hundreds, if not thousands, of property owners are losing their property rights without notification. When the county went through this process, they notified the property owners that were affected. When you have a map change that affects which area you're in or which area you're not in, that affects their development rights. Changes that affect property rights regardless of who or how that entity was established should be noticed individually and not in a broad spectrum. The nature and anticipated effect of the proposed changes requires additional evaluation. This should be sent back to staff and gone in the next cycle and not in this cycle. The potential for restricting property rights and properties have been diminished without notice to any of these properties. Relying upon general notices is insufficient to take care of those properties and the individuals and their properties that are affected. The property rights section itself is inadequate and does not address the issues regarding the downzoning or the downdevelopment of their potential development that's allowed currently under code. There seems to be an urgency in moving this forward. I would say that there is no urgency. This has too many dramatic effects upon the entire community. It should go back, be reevaluated, and let's have some serious dialogue with the development community, as well as the neighborhood leaders, so that we can come to a consensus. I thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Next up, we have Michael Marino.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Michael Marino, Western Alliance. I provide a letter. It might have been beyond the time, so if not, I can provide that to the clerk as well. But in our letter, we wanted to note that we think that the product in front of you would be consistent. It's not just from a Westshore perspective with the coastal development area, but the overall consideration of how do we develop along the coast specifically in a manner that is sustainable, you can have resiliency. There's policies within the language that would promote that in effect, including giving private development the ability to build resilient infrastructure that would have some public benefit. So I think that's something to consider. You know, we as an organization, we've been working with staff. Staff has been very communicative with us, even presenting to our group last week. So we're appreciative of staff, and I think that one of the challenges going forward for our community, and I reference this in the letter, is that we are a community that exists because we have a bay. We have this body of water. That's why we have this economic development that we have in this community. So having a document that understands that while also then moves forward in a way that incorporates resiliency, incorporates the ability to develop on the waterfront, while having, you know, reasonable standards and reasonable understanding of what it will take in the face of climate change, sea level rise, storms, is important. And I think, you know, that's something that this document aims to go for. Maybe there are improvements to be had, but as it relates to our particular area, we think that the staff's been very professional with us in making sure that Westshore has the ability to grow, while also understanding future challenges as it relates to waterfront issues. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next up, we have Jake Kramer.
We go to the Elmo, please. Jake Kramer, Sterns Weaver Miller, 401 East Jackson Street. Commissioners, we appreciate all the work staff has put into this. We know it's, I mean, this has been a several-year odyssey at this point, and we know that everyone feels some need to move this forward. I would ask if you do move it forward, I think there's a couple of critical changes that I'm going to suggest to you tonight. The first one is dealing with policies 3.7, 1.2, and 3. And in my legal opinion, these policies are not clear enough for us, for the public, and for your staff in laying out exactly what the criteria are for every comprehensive plan. We should know what the universe is, right? That's how your staff report will be structured. And the way I read them currently, we could all go look at things, maybe even outside of the comprehensive plan. All the development community wants with regard to these policies is, I've got some suggested language, but we'd just like some clarity, so that we all know, what are the exact criteria we look at? Nothing more, nothing less, and we think these would help everyone. The other clarification we're requesting tonight, building off of Mr. Marino's comments, are I've been working with a coalition of landowners on Rocky Point, and we were frankly pretty surprised, because we were excited to see the board, this commission requested Westshore be included as a coastal development area, and we were all surprised to see that when it came back to you, Rocky Point wasn't included. Now, staff has brought up a point about needing a funding mechanism for what we've called the coastal development areas. And this is just one of many ad valorem tax assessments for a property on Rocky Point that shows for years and years, they've been paying into the Westshore Business District. And those funds, my understanding is, they can be used for things like transportation Now, this is a map I obtained from the property appraiser's office today, explaining or showing where this larger area is. I know there may be some people thinking, well, Jake, Westshore is in it, and Westshore is a development of regional impact. That's true. Most of Rocky Point is as well. Most of Rocky Point has had that layer of state oversight. That's why they have the funding ability for these future improvements. And again, this was a surprise, because the current comprehensive plan includes Rocky Point. Anywhere you see Westshore in the current comprehensive plan in general, that's already including Rocky Point. So we think it should be included in fairness, so that we're not at a competitive disadvantage, because we're all in the same taxing area. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next up, Elvin Martinez, Jr.
Good evening, Elvin Martinez. Tampa's growing fast, and with growth comes a critical opportunity. Our city's long-range land use plan, intended to guide us through 2045, should be bold, visionary, and transformative. But at 474 pages, this draft plan misses the mark. It lacks ambition, especially for our core communities like West Tampa, Tampa Heights, and Sulphur Springs, and our key corridors like Dale Mayberry, Nebraska, and Hillsborough Avenue. John Hill of the Tampa Bay Times recently asked, "Has Tampa Bay lost its stomach for big ideas?" He reminded us of a time when Tampa dreamed big, when civic conversations gave rise to real transformation. Today, too often, we treat basic maintenance as achievement, filling potholes, not a vision. Yes, we've seen some great private sector leadership, Jeff Venech, Daryl Shaw, but what's missing is a cohesive citywide plan that unites projects and progress under one bold vision. Joe Chalora once warned against piecemeal efforts. Tampa needs a comprehensive plan that moves beyond chores and tackles the future with ambition. I encourage you to rediscover the courage to dream. We must channel the spirit of leaders like Mayor Bill Poe, Mayor and Governor Bob Martinez, Chester Ferguson, City Councilman and Commissioner Joe Chalora, people who weren't afraid to challenge the norm and pursue greatness. As John Hill said, "We used to hear the energy of a city on the move. Today, there's mostly silence." But we believe Tampa's future leaders are already here. We just need them to rise, leaders willing to take political risks, ignore the echo chambers, and to aim high. Let's stop measuring success by chores. Instead, I encourage you to ask, what bold ideas will shape Tampa into a leading 21st century city? Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next up, we have Gordon Schiff.
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, my name is Gordon Schiff, 4155 West Cypress Street. And I'm here with Mr. Martinez, and I'm going to continue with our presentation. I also have a formal document to present to you all afterwards, which goes into more detail, because it can't, three minutes was simply not enough time, but so I'll give that to you all. But tonight, I want to talk about what it means to think big for Tampa's future, and how our land use plan can serve as a launchpad for that vision. Thinking big means entire neighborhoods designed for the 21st century, with homes, businesses, transit, and public spaces that work in harmony. It means to dream about transformational projects, like a sports entertainment conference center in the heart of the city, complete with a retractable roof, by the way. It means building midtown-type mixed-use developments in various neighborhoods throughout the city. We must finally link land use and transportation. Our streets should serve people, not just cars, with urban trails safely separated from traffic, built for walking, biking, running, and next-gen personal transport. Let's think vertically, too. Raised trails like the New York City High Line, which I'm sure many of you are familiar with, could turn traffic corridors like Dale Mayberry into vibrant, safe, elevated spaces for movement and connection. None of this is in your plan. That's why I'm talking about it. We must embrace next-gen public transit, dedicated lanes, fixed guideways, and autonomous shuttles. And with Bright Line likely coming to Tampa, if you've been reading, our plan must include connections to a future private train station. But thinking big isn't just about transit and buildings, it's about industry, too. Let's make room for advanced manufacturing, robotics, and biosciences, especially in areas like Drew Park. It's also about making workforce housing more available where people work, and cutting the red tape that makes housing and business development unnecessarily expensive. None of that is in the plan. There are designated areas, but it's way too low. The bar is much higher. And finally, we need the voices of young people. If we want a plan that accurately reflects where the world is going, we need to listen to young people. We need to listen to those who are going to live the longest, and I think that was probably lacking in this whole process. In short, a truly great plan isn't a large, how big it is, a large stack. It's a living roadmap to a bold, connected city through 2045. So I will present to you, I have a copy of Mr. Hill's article, which I commend to you all. I have a more detailed list of 13 suggested upgrades to this draft, which I commend to you all to consider, and I appreciate your time and look forward to working further with your staff. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next up, we have Andrew Davies. Andrew Davies, going once, going twice? All right. And we will go over to Tyler Hudson.
Good evening, Commissioners. Tyler Hudson, 400 North Ashley Drive. Just want to reiterate, Jake said it best on Rocky Point. I think having an independent funding mechanism as a criteria to be in the coastal development area isn't perfect. Like CRAs think are very politically vulnerable, but it's something. But I think the fact that Rocky Point's paying into the Westshore Special Services District, I think should give you all enough of a kind of a methodology to step on to include that. So that's point one. Point two is another coastal development area, which you can see on the map there. So, you know, that area around Green, like, that's like right around Gas Works. I think there's, I know that in this part, I've shared this with staff, that the coastal development area around that kind of Adamo corridor, a lot of that's not in a CRA at all. It's never going to be in a CRA. I think we're probably never going to see another new CRA again in the state of Florida. But this is the type of area where we probably should be concentrating growth. And certainly, this commission and your predecessors have been comfortable approving significant amount of density on that Adamo corridor. And so, as far as like the line of demarcation, I mean, that's 30th Street there, which is essentially the crosstown connector. I would urge you to consider including the parcels that front Adamo west of 30th Street, not talking about going down into Palmetto Beach, or Lorna is not talking about South Tampa. But I do think it just makes sense, and maybe there isn't a CRA in place, but I think this is an area where sometimes things just make sense, even if the justification applicable to other parcels isn't there. So I'd ask you to consider that portion of Adamo, Ybor City, being included in the coastal development area. And just want to thank staff and you guys for your patience. We throw a lot of applications at your staff, and you got to do this and deal with all the work we're throwing at you. Everyone's been really transparent, so thanks for your time.
Thank you. All right. I'm going to call this one, too. They didn't say what they wanted to talk about, but they said yes. So Melissa Strasser?
Good evening, Melissa Strassner, Land Entitlement Manager for David Weekly Homes, Tampa Division. It's a pleasure to be before this commission tonight. I just want to thank all of you and staff for your diligent efforts to bring all of you and staff for your diligent efforts to bring this forth. I greatly like the density incentives and missing middle incentives to help bring more housing to the area where it's needed. If there is one critique I would make, it does have to deal with development in the coastal high hazard areas. If I could get the overhead, and I apologize, I'm using my phone for this. This is section, this is the section 7.1.2. We have A, B, C, you have the text before you, C being anything that's publicly initiated. I would like to see a D there that says, any development that meets CHHA development criteria. And then have that criteria set forth in an LDC, when we have the LDC amendment come before you. The reason being is that we see a lot of private developers coming in to help build public infrastructure when they bring forth a development. And we actually see that revitalization helping the area, making it better for life safety, adding in sidewalks where we need sidewalks, and, you know, improving stormwater, improving drainage. So I would just ask that if we want more direction, that would be a clear way to give developers direction. Yes, you can do a plan amendment here. It's not just for, you know, a horse and pony show. And we'll give you the criteria on what we find would be suitable to develop in the CHHA. So that's the only critique I have. Thank you all again for your time on this. And thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next up, we have Malcolm Klein. Malcolm Klein, going once, going twice. All right. And we will go to John Murray. No John Murray either, going once, going twice. All right, gone. And we go to Jane Graham. No Jane Graham. All right, Danielle Campbell? No. All right.
Thank you. I was saving myself earlier. My name is Susan Swift. I was here earlier representing a client. I'm a planning director for an architecture and engineering firm. But this evening, I'm here as a certified planner and a concerned citizen and property owner. I, let me, I'm going to put a couple of things. Do I have only three minutes?
Yes.
I thought so. Let me put my slides up here, if you don't mind giving me a second. Or not. Let's see. I do have some extras. Sorry, give me one second here. I, I had, I had one. I, as I said, I'm a, I'm a certified planner. For those of you who don't know me, I think I have a good knowledge of the city's plan and codes. I, for 11 years, was essentially what, what is the, was the zoning director for the city of Tampa. So I have a good feel for this. I also was a, my specialty was affordable housing in graduate school. And I, I think this is a, a very good vision and a lot of good work. I do think there's another stage that is needed. And that is, there are a lot of density increases we need and we need to focus on in order to actually protect existing neighborhoods. So I think what's missing here is translating all of these good ideas into map changes. We've heard a lot about certainty from your staff, as is this, there's no certainty or predictability, not for the developers in this room. I, again, I, I do both sides. I represent neighborhoods, sometimes against developments, and I represent developers. But there's no predictability because these changes have not been put on the map. And that's a scary thing, but there's too many words in the plan. There's too many pages, too many words. There's a lot of overlapping. If you would give me some extra time, I-
You have your three minutes.
Was that the end?
No, you got 20 seconds.
20 seconds. There's a lot of words. There's not enough certainty. And for the, the transit corridors, there are some really scary outcomes, I think, that if you look at how you apply the, the quarter mile-
That's, that's it, Ms. Swift. Your time's up.
I understand that. I, I-
Your time's up. That's it. All right. Next up, we have Eric Gardano. Gardino?
My name is Eric Gardino.
Turn the mic on.
Apologies. My name is Eric Gardino. I'm the Government Affairs Director for the Bay Area Apartment Association. We're a trade association that represents apartment owners, developers, managers. I'm here to speak specifically today on the revisions that were proposed in today's version of the comprehensive plan. We believe the changes proposed specifically to 3.3.4, 7.1.4, and the West Shore Business District are important improvements to the plan. The city needs more housing. It needs it today, and it definitely is going to need it tomorrow. We believe these changes will help promote additional housing in the city. I think everybody wants a walkable city. And I think the original language in 3.3.4, at least partially, was intended to help promote that walkable city concept and idea that we all want. Ground floor retail, restaurants, and other commercial in multifamily can absolutely work, but it does not work everywhere. You need the combination of population density, foot traffic, and a host of other factors to all come together for that to be successful. Projects that don't consider these factors risk having the "for lease" sign out on windows of empty commercial space on those ground floors. Use of FAR can boost housing density, adding to our housing stock. Qualifying access to FAR, however, by requiring non-residential uses on 60% of the ground floor means a lot of developers will simply not use FAR because the requirements will make the, the project inflexible. For those deals that do move forward without FAR, the city will lose out on units that could have been produced on the same footprint, and thus reducing what that project can contribute to the city's housing goals. It also means that there will be fewer people in that specific area, and reducing thus the success potentially of any of the retail or commercial that is built in that space. Because they need bodies, they need people, they need density to be successful ventures. Allowing for more targeted application of any requirements attached to the use of FAR instead of a one-size-fits-all approach makes sense. We also see the changes to 7.1.4, and West Shore is positive. Powerful storms are a reality that we all must face. Modern multifamily buildings, their construction, they're built to withstand the storms. And they won't get financing, they won't get insurance if they can't do that. On top of that, modern building design is more efficient, both water and energy. This makes them more resilient than most of their neighbors. Get, and they give the neighbor, the people who live there peace of mind that they have a home to come to.
All right. That's your time, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next up, we have Annie Barnes.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Annie Barnes, and I'm an associate planner with Sterns Beaver Miller, 401 East Jackson Street. Tonight, I come before you with unique perspective as a planner with both public and private land use experience, including previously working for Hillsborough County and the city of Tampa. My overriding concerns are related to regulating development, including design, without implementing specific land development code language. There is draft plan language regarding building step backs for the RMU and UMU future land use categories from lower density intensity future land use categories. It is unclear why this language is necessary to constrain such high density intensity future land use categories in an urban environment. Further, there is also text regarding residential flu categories, R83, R50, and R35, requiring projects to offset any negative visual impacts. This proposed policy language does not conform with Florida law, which states that if a neighbor, if neighbors want to prevent visual impacts, they should buy an easement. Proposed land use policy 5.4.7 states minimize or mitigate visual impacts of larger buildings through visual buffers, story step backs, neighborhood compatible architecture, and citing techniques. This policy all, already provides an avenue for urban design, making it unnecessary to provide language within the previously listed future land use categories. Jake Kramer and I submitted a detailed letter regarding these suggested revisions, among other revisions, and we are happy to discuss further. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Who else do we have here? Mr. Hudson already went. I think that's it. We got a couple people, in person, we got a couple people on the line. Let's start with Bill Bertolino. Is Bill Bertolino on virtually?
Hi, Bill. In the phone?
Hi. Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, thank you so much for including me in this. I'm a homeowner on 4115 West Barcelona Street. Lived here for 25 years, raising my family here. And I'm honestly just shocked that I am today finding out about this plan as being a pretty active person in our Virginia Parks Association, homeowners association, and just things happening in my town altogether. I, I can guarantee you that not one in 100 people in the area that's going to be affected in South Tampa even knows that these types of discussions are going on. And so, for about 25 reasons, this is just like a bad idea. If, if you go anywhere near rush hour, our roads are already packed. West Shore is going to just get terribly worse with the South of Gandy stuff going on and the whole big development that used to be the trailer park there. And then Plant High is pretty much already at capacity, as are our other most excellent schools. And I'm afraid that people are going to bid up the prices of these more affordable houses just to get their kids into the Plant High and the other A-rated schools here in South Tampa. So I don't think this is really going to make things more affordable in the long run, plus the danger of evacuations and bad weather events that are just going to get worse. Thank you for taking time to listen to my concerns.
Thank you. All right. Next up online, we had Diego Duran. Is Diego on the line?
Good afternoon. This is Diego, everyone. I am a local architect here with Sharp's Design Studio. And there, there's a couple things, several of them actually, that, that we'd like to highlight. You know, one of them being the short time to review the draft. However, you know, would urge you to consider how some of the critical policies are still very unclear. If you talk about policies on 3.7.1, 2.3, I think they clearly lay out the rules for the comprehensive plan amendments. I think these policies should stay exactly what the staff, applicant public, the city council must evaluate for the amendments. In addition, the other one would be manual land use categories are proposing some vague language, requiring projects to offset any negative visual impacts. This would be something you can see on R83, R50, and 35. I think the vague language in these categories creates uncertainty. I could certainly lead into some inconsistent application of the rules. So I mean, that's something that we already have a difficult time with interpretations of the code. And certainly, you know, could review those things. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Last but not least, I'm not sure, I have a Gail Everson, who didn't really say what they wanted to speak on, so I'm going to put it out there. I see Gail is on the line, hopefully.
Yes, sir. This is actually Gail and her husband, Everson, Winston. And we just wanted to mention, just similar to what Bill had stated, we're a part of the Neighbor, or North Hyde Park Association, and we didn't really get any notification. So we're fairly active in our association.
Yeah, actually, we're under Carlos Ramirez. So we, you know, had no knowledge of any of this going on until like the last few days. And one of our concerns is we just built in 2022, a brand-new one-story, single-family home, one, with a Tesla solar roof. One side of our house has a David Weekly Town Home, which blocks one whole side of our roof. And our fear is if on the other side, another town home that's two or three stories gets to be built, our solar roof is not going to be generating what we need it to. So that is one concern, that when you're looking at these streets where we do have one and two-story homes, if there's already an established home with solar roofs, which the city of Tampa is trying to promote solar roofs, if all of a sudden you get two townhomes built on either side of it, all of a sudden, solar is no longer functional, as well as the backup battery that's in the garage that's supposed to be holding energy there.
So I think another thing, too, is the individual notification. We didn't get that. And also with the transit corridor, they just highlighted houses. They didn't even consider what is already in that existing neighborhood, such as there's huge apartment complexes already on Rome. We already have a David Weekly House, which the David Weekly Houses all look the same. So if we keep getting David Weekly Houses, we're going to get these cookie cutter-looking townhomes versus kind of the North Hyde Park look of these single-family homes. So I, I think that's pretty problematic.
Yeah. And when we built, obviously, we had codes to follow, and part of it was following the West Tampa overlay. We had to build a home that looked and fit into North Hyde Park. And now, all of a sudden, it looks like with all of these two- and three-story townhomes, it's all cookie cutter. The North Hyde Park look is no longer existing. I mean, we're trying to have, you know, the tree canopies, we're trying to still keep all of North Hyde Park looking like it used to, but with all of these drastic changes, it's, yeah, it's scary to see that something like this can kind of just be slided in without public and neighborhoods being involved.
So we urge you not to vote on this and let the public have more public hearings. That's our final comment. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. And that is all we had sign up in the public comment. So did staff want to respond, rebut, make any statement?
Thank you, Chairman. Jennifer Malone for Planning Commission staff. I do appreciate the opportunity to be up here before you again and maybe clarify a few things. The first thing I'm going to address is increasing density in the coastal high hazard area. This plan update is providing more, and I think Ms. Dickens put it very well when she was showing those slides, is providing more guidance on where plan amendments should be considered in the CHHA, based on funding mechanisms, or, I'm sorry, it's, that's the main thing, is based on the funding mechanisms, or areas that are transitioning, such as the transitional use 24 category, we're already trying to phase out. And so those, that would be considered, but only to the next higher category. So I just want to put that on the record. There's also no round-up density for the townhomes in the CHHA. And for most of the city, no bonuses in the CHHA, only in those specific areas that we have carved out. There was another statement made about a map amendments, the, and a surety for these changes. And I think it's really important to point out that map amendments are, a lot can happen through the map amendment process, and publicly initiated amendments can take some time. And staff really felt that these policy changes would, would give the city the, and being implemented through any zonings or through the code, would, would achieve what the city is wanting to achieve without updating the map, which would really lock it into place for a very long
Ms. Arnida?
Well, I, I think Mr. Johnson has something to say. And then I did have something to add after him.
There we go.
Sorry about that. Good evening. Evan Johnson, City Planning, City of Tampa. Just a couple of items I wanted to point out from some of the, the public input we've heard. First, I think it's really important to note that-
Hang on a second. Hang on a second.
Yes, sir.
Whose name? Yeah?
It won't be long.
All right.
First of all, just wanted to note, there's several mentions of removal of development rights through the plan update process. We've had multiple conversations with City Legal on these issues for, been at least a year, we've been talking about all of this, and it is their opinion that bonuses are discretionary in nature. And so the fact that we are removing the possibility of a bonus in certain specific areas is not removing an allowable density. It's not a taking from you. So I think that, you know, I am not an attorney, I'm just telling you the conversations that we've had back and forth, and I'm sure, you know, they'll, they would be glad to bring all that up and have that discussion in front of City Council. But I wanted to make sure that was clear on the record from our perspective. I also wanted to mention, there was a note on Ms. Swift's PowerPoint slide, talking about how the new plan doesn't support the findings of our housing needs assessment. I just wanted to make clear that we're actually in the process of working through code amendments to implement the affordable housing bonuses, and those will actually include, there's a sliding scale being implemented that will actually give higher bonuses for lower AMI affordable units being provided. So her concern was under fifty percent AMI, which is where the greatest need is. We are working on that. It will be part of the code that gets adopted. So I just wanted to put that out there. Also, Mr. Gerdunio from the Apartment Association mentioned the fact that, spoke to not wanting to have requiring mixed uses, or a secondary non-residential use in some of these, in apartment buildings. Agree completely, we've put, set this up as an incentive, again, to encourage the use of Flory ratio versus units per acre. It is not a requirement, and it is not intended to be a requirement in the comp plan. And the last thing, I noted that there was some comments and discussion about the land development code needing to be updated to reflect what's in the plan. That is underway, first major update since the nineteen eighties, and I would expect it to be passed in the next couple of years. It's very much under process, and so this comp plan is going to feed right into it and align very much with that effort. And that's it for me.
If I may, Chairman, I just wanted to, Evan, Mr. Johnson did a great job, and I just wanted to reiterate about the map changes comment. The bonus structure allows the city to achieve a public benefit for increased density and intensity. If we change the color on the map, that is not the case. They just pay a fee, and then they can achieve that increased density or intensity. And so that is a big reason, that was a big discussion we have heard from, from, from many stakeholders, and that is a very large reason why we went in this direction, and also based on recommendations from our consultant. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. All right. And I see Commissioner Seaman just-
I know.
-anxious over there, just anxious.
I have some stuff, but can you-
To the planning commissioners now. Commissioner Seaman, go ahead.
I'm so sorry. Can you please just clarify what you just said one more time? Sure. So if the, if the colors change on the map, if an applicant comes before you, or if staff initiates it, and we've maybe looked at, and I'm not saying that this, let me back up. In certain instances, I think that it's beneficial to do publicly-initiated map amendments on certain corridors, or in certain areas of the city where we think that that would be, when it's just not lining up. Other areas of the city, if the color on the map is changed and the density goes up, the developer might receive a lot more development potential, but no public benefit. The bonus structure that we have proposed ties in a public benefit for more. So if you want more density, affordable housing, or providing green bonus options, you know, providing more intensity on transit-ready corridors because we need those units for the transit to work. Yeah. But there's a time and a place for publicly-initiated map amendments, too, but at the level of increases that we have been seeing come before this board and get approved by Tampa City Council, there has been no public benefit for a lot of those.
And if I might just add, the idea behind the density bonuses is that they're, they also would be able to be achieved through the rezoning process, so that would be a faster process. They'd be able to skip the comprehensive plan amendment, and they'd be able to achieve potentially more than they could through the comprehensive plan because they would be able, amendment, because they'd be able to stack some of those bonuses on top of each other. So we think there's, like, more benefit and, and a faster process as well, so in exchange for that public benefit that they're getting, giving us.
Okay. I have some more.
Go ahead.
All right. So if, these are also for you.
Okay.
Okay, so we had talked previously about using FAR for the mixed-use plan categories as was previously allowed. Is that still going to be allowed, or did that change? What's the, where did we land? Let me get the revised language. I think where we landed was that there's no more percent in the proposed language, but that will be determined through, I mean, it really belongs in the land development code. We workshopped it a lot with city staff, and Evan was very much, you know, with us in those discussions, and agreed that that, and I'm going to put this on the Elmo. So whether or not they can use FAR or density will be determined by the land development code? Just want to make sure I'm clear. The criteria will be established in the land development code. Okay. Yeah. Okay. And that code update will run concurrently with the, the adoption to City Council. While we're on that, this would be to Evan, but, so I know that, in that consideration for the sixty percent ground-floor mixed-use component, for example, I think that's what we had, they had previously talked about, I just wanted to voice that I think that that's pretty sensitive, obviously, and it could prohibit development in certain circumstances. I was just trying to think of, you know, some examples of this, and unless you have a grocer or a warehouse on a first floor, you know, sixty percent, even if you have a whole block, is really not going to be feasible necessarily. So if we want, you know, walkable retail, which I think a lot of us do want, those percentages are just, out of necessity, going to have to be smaller. So that was just, you know, a note that I, I wanted to point out to you, and then while you're up here, I had another note that I had mentioned to staff, but some of these affordable density bonuses that we have, I was thinking through some of this, and just the way that development functions, you're not going to really be able to make a determination on a sales price at the beginning of development necessarily. So some of these affordable bonuses are going to almost necessitate, they're only going to be able to be used by people who, by developers who intend to have rental units. So the for-sale components might not, or the for-sale units for these density bonuses might not necessarily be applicable because of permitting time, due diligence time, and construction time, because you don't know how construction costs are going to fluctuate, for example, so you can't determine a sales price until after you have gotten closer to the end of construction. So I just, as a consideration, and maybe a way, you know, a way we might want to think outside the box on this, the way we currently have it written, these affordable density bonuses are pretty much only going to function for rental units. Anyway, so that's, that's that. Okay. That's all I have for you, Evan, unless you want to answer that.
Just a couple of brief comments. Between April seventh and now, we did have, we've had several meetings. We met with the Builders Association to talk about some of the issues, particularly around the mixed-use percentages and how we're going to determine that. So absolutely aware that it is a sensitive topic, and look forward to lots more conversations once we actually get that code cycle started up. And, and I think as far as for-sale units and rental units, I mean, I believe that, you know, City Council definitely would like to see both. You know, they, they really discuss and talk a lot about the need for affordable purchase housing, as well as rental. And so we want, we believe that the way that the bonuses are designed can allow for both, but we certainly are going to be open to the possibility. I mean, one of the reasons of doing a, doing a lot of this through the land development code, frankly, is to make it a little bit easier to adjust as we learn how the market's responding to these different options. You know, it's not a comprehensive plan text amendment that's going to have to go to the state moving forward. It's something that we're actually going to deal with in the code itself. So absolutely want to get both results, but understand completely the concern.
And so maybe a good option for that is, of course, everybody wants affordable for-sale housing as well, would be maybe some sort of workshop with developers who do these kinds of things, townhomes duplexes specifically, to figure out ways in which you can maybe get affordable, affordable types incentives, but without that AMI designation that you're going to have to determine at the planning stage. Or, you know, a affordable type commitment that you would have to determine early on. Okay. I think that was, that was that. Okay, so back to staff. I had two other questions. So there was some mention of Rocky Point as a coastal development area, and I know that the West Shore, you know, redevelopment area on Northwest Shore and Kennedy was considered a coastal development area. Were there, okay, so were there any reasons that Rocky Point, the Macy's area, and then West Shore Marina District weren't considered as those coastal development areas? Yeah. Jennifer Malone, Planning Commission staff. So Rocky Point is very vulnerable, and, thank you, Danny. Danny's putting up the coastal development areas map on the Elmo. Rocky Point's very vulnerable. It, it has one way in and one way out. So staff did not feel that that was good planning, and from a resiliency perspect, from an evacuation perspective, because that's really how we're looking at this. The Macy's site, let me just zoom in on the Elmo.
I'll jump, I can jump in there, Jen.
Thank you.
The, I mean, we looked at the West Shore area because the, that was a regional activity center, which the regional activity center did not, does not, that we've identified, also did not include Rocky Point for the same reasons that it is, has that additional vulnerability related to transportation access, and that, that, the, whereas the rest of the, the West Shore area has much greater connectivity, and so the, the designation of the West Shore area as a regional activity center, that it has this special taxing district, and it has DRI, it has a, is it, it's a master plan, it has, it has a number of different planning activities that have been done on, layered on top of it, that are to some degree similar in nature to what has occurred in the CRAs. And so we felt like that was mimicking the methodology that we looked at with the CRAs, and having a vision articulated for greater redevelopment, and a vision for their future is something greater than what it is today, and also articulating that there was a funding source and mechanisms in place in terms of the development approvals, and overlays and things in place to make that happen. And so we felt that that mirrored the methodology we had used in the other areas. The West Shore Marina District and the Macy's area, none of that's in place in those.
All right. Thank you. Okay. As far as the R ten change, three point three point six C, the architectural style and massing seem like they might be relatively subjective, and talking about in terms of the increase, the rounding increase for R ten. It seems like these might be so subjective that, for example, if there were a townhome complex coming in next to a single-family, obviously, the massing would be different. So it, it almost feels like the point of this was to be able to round for larger density complexes like that, but it, this, the subjective standard might make it such that those kinds of complexes don't get to have this standard applied to them because of the way it was written. So that was just one thing I wanted to mention, and again, maybe, so the next couple of things, maybe there's something you guys just want to consider, maybe it's a modification we can do later if we pass tonight, you know, just for consideration. I also believe that three point seven point one, as Jake Kramer mentioned, could be more well-defined. I think those standards are a little opaque, and then seven point one point two D, that consideration, I forget who mentioned it, it was an entitlement, I think it was you. Yes, I think that was a pretty good suggestion, actually. I think it could be really helpful, and in, it would allow the city to determine what kind of infrastructure improvements it would like to see in order to get that kind of development approved. I think it's probably a good standard, similar to what we've done elsewhere here, is putting that standard on the city. If you want an increase in density in the coastal high-hazard area, and they want to increase infrastructure for a square mile around it, then, you know, great, and that's something that the city can determine. I think just, you know, maybe leaving that option open for the city to make that determination later, in case somebody does want it, might be a good option. So again, these are things that maybe we can talk about.
To that point, I think that is exactly what the policy seven point one point four does. I think seven point, when the city explores and puts in, we added that it should be in the land development code, that, that they put that in some, some mitigation and ways that developers can offset that. When they put that in, then I think we add D to seven point one point two. I think it's a little bit premature to add D to seven point one point two now, when we don't know, and we can't tell anybody-
Right.
-what they do to meet it.
That's fair enough.
So, so I think, I liked where that was going. I, I like that there's a, that that would be the end result of that. But I think we've, we need to get the city to have, have done that piece first, so that we have an answer to tell people, because otherwise, they're going to, they're going to get excited, and they're going to say, oh, I want, I want to meet D.
Sure.
But we don't have an answer for them.
That makes sense. One more thing about a public comment was the negative visual impacts. I don't remember who mentioned that. It was Mr. Kramer and Annie Barnes. Okay. Again, I think that could be subjective and could cause denial somewhat arbitrarily, depending, you know, on preferences, so that's just something else that maybe we should consider. And the last thing, and I'll wrap up, is there was a lot of commentary in these packets, you know, there was a lot of public comment, and I want to be clear that no one here tonight is trying to contend that we should increase density in the coastal high-hazard area. We're simply trying to say that these plans should go forward to City Council in case a developer might be able to win the hearts and minds of City Council in a way we can't currently imagine, and that we shouldn't have blanket prohibitions against that. So that's it.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Seaman. Any other comments, questions from the commissioners? I'll throw a couple out there, just to kill some time. Some people had made some comments. She covered Mr. Kramer's comments pretty well, and you guys talked about Rocky Point, but one thing that wasn't discussed was the taxing thing, which I found kind of curious. Is that true, that their taxes go into the West Shore area? And if so, like, what's, are we okay with not, with leaving them out, adding West Shore in, and they pay into the?
Yeah, so West, the, well, Ms. Dickens, Planning Commission staff, West Shore has the special services district. Our rationale for Rocky Point was, again, the, the resiliency issues, and we do recognize that, yes, they do pay into that special services district, but we're trying to balance, you know, a number of factors, including resiliency, evacuation times, and that was really the overriding reason for Rocky Point.
And that's, that's another point I wanted to raise. It's interesting to me that staff makes this argument about saving lives, and there've been some other politicians around the City of Tampa who have raised that point also. But after we say we want to raise lives, we're like, oh, but there's these great carve-outs we have to put you right in the area where we said we wanted to save lives. So like, again, whenever we play these games, these double-sided games out of both sides of our mouths, it's like a red flag for me, and it's like, well, why are we having to do that? If we're, if we're about saving lives, then let's shut it down, and if we're about investing and growing stuff in the coastal high-hazard area, like former Commissioner Marino says- like former Commissioner Marino says, because we're a bay and we should be developing by the water, then let's do that. But as soon as this kind of mealy mouth, like, "Oh, well, it's both things and it's whatever we want it to be," comes up, it always gives me pause. So that seems a little strange to me, but...
Yeah, I mean, with respect to that comment, you know, we, the coastal high-hazard area is very broad. Within those specific areas, because they do have that funding mechanism and the plans for redevelopment, that funding that could be used for resiliency improvements for making those areas safer, those are the reasons why those areas were selected.
All right, if you say so.
And certainly if it is the Planning Commission's by motion, you can add Rocky Point into that area that is within your purview.
I was just, I was just raising the points. I was just raising the points here, getting them on the record, just my thoughts. And one other thing I noticed in the comments, there was a lot of comments about lack of noticing. So I wanted staff to make a statement on that, just to get it on the record. Did we notice as we were supposed to legally? I assume we did, but I just want it, you know, said, because I saw a lot of comments about that, so.
Sure, absolutely. You know, this is a, as text amendments to the comprehensive plan, yes, we have met all of the proper notice. None of these are individual map changes to the comprehensive plan, which would have different notice requirements with the relationship to signs and mailed letters and things of that nature. If there was anything changing about any individual property, there would be individual mailed notice to those property owners.
Okay, and I also saw some comments about people who only caught it on Facebook after, obviously, there was some sort of public campaign that went out against it. But did we also, I know I saw videos in places and I saw things in different newspapers. Did we do that as normal?
Yeah, we went above and beyond and we've, you know, we've posted on our social media. Of course, we only have so much reach, but we've tried to publicize it in our newsletter. We've partnered with the city of Tampa on different ways to promote it. And I think the news media, they were here earlier today, I think, running some pieces about it. But yeah, we've tried to get the word out the best that we could.
Okay. All right, those are my only points, so I'm gonna keep quiet now, see what else everybody has to say. Commissioner Lau.
We're very close with our points that we were going to ask about. I would like to hear how Rocky Point differs in access and ingress from our downtown district.
Well, I mean, just in terms of the different access points, there's the one access point in to Rocky Point, you know, making a right-hand turn on Rocky Point Drive, and then one access point out. Whereas downtown, there's multiple different ways that you can leave downtown.
Does Rocky Point move to Pinellas County? So there's two distinct exits from Rocky Point. You can move to Pinellas County and move north on 19, or you can take the Turnpike and go north immediately, or you can travel through downtown. I think Rocky Point, more than anything else, underscores our inaction to address that we are a coastal city and that it's one of the jewels of our city and we're not developing it in a way that draws people to the city. That brings me to my second point, where I think one of the biggest flaws we have with this is the LDC, the land development code, is not moving in lockstep, where we're addressing, where we should be addressing a lot of these issues in parallel in terms of how we develop these high coastal hazard areas. And when I hear it's two years out, that gives me a lot of concern, frankly. The third point that I had, I was wondering about the notice, that was adequately and well answered. Thank you very much for that. And then I caught a note about the expansion of mixed-use density, which, you know, I think about Seminole Heights and I think about some of the areas. And could you guys comment on that from a staff perspective? Do you feel like we're expanding the areas of the city where we're going to be able to deploy mixed-use, mixed uses?
You mean in terms of the mixed use?
Right.
Well, there... Is this for Jennifer Malone, Planning Commission staff, is this regarding the FAR for residential or just the promotion of more mixed use?
Promotion of it in general. How would you characterize it from the way it exists today with the 2016 writing and versus where we're going with what you're asking us to forward to city council tonight?
Yeah, okay. So today, I'll walk through the community mixed-use 35, future land, our favorite category. Anybody can, if, in Seminole Heights, because that's the central Tampa Planning District, you can utilize FAR for density. And you started a 1.0 FAR. If you would like to achieve a 1 point, if the development needs to achieve a 1.5 FAR, there's an incentive built into the category. If the project is located on an arterial roadway and it has, it's a mixture of uses, then, so residential and commercial, then it would qualify for a 1.5. And then to get all the way up to a 2.0 FAR, they would have to bonus, they'd have to enter into a bonus agreement with the city, provide affordable housing, or there's another option for capital improvements projects. The current proposal is different in that the base FAR is a 1.5 now. So we've raised that in the community mixed-use category. So we're starting higher, but you can only use FAR for your residential projects if you're meeting that criteria, the percentage which will be set out in the land development code.
Well, and it might not even be a percentage, it might be that there are alternative ways to meet that because we're really looking for an activation along the ground floor. It might be an amount of street frontage or something like that. We talked about a number of different options with the development community and potentially a menu of choices being available to achieve that, that mixed use, that walkability. And that depending on the context of where the project is, that they might need to have some different options.
Yes.
So I think that we're actually making it easier to achieve the mix of uses than it is today and that we're providing a higher floor-to-air ratio than the plan allows today.
Right, so today, and that's, that's, yeah, feedback we've heard is that there, today, there's no, it just, it's just two uses. There's no type, there, I mean, it's not defined, like, how big the second use should be. I also just want to point out, the first bullet on this slide about allowing the consideration of commercial neighborhood uses in the residential category in more areas of the city will also help promote the mixture of uses for more neighborhood-serving commercial.
That's very helpful, thanks. And I'll say this last thing, not to be flip or cute, because I really do appreciate the work that y'all have poured into this and noticing an entire city and getting the development community along and, to go along, neighborhood coalitions to go along. We're never going to find that perfect document. So I really do appreciate the work that you guys have poured into this. And the cute and flippant part is, I don't think I've, in my three-year tenure up here, I've never sat here and had the development community and the neighborhoods be against something. So maybe we're in that sweet spot. I'm not really sure what to think on what I heard tonight, but I'll just call that out. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Lau. Commissioner Kona.
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate all of the commissioners' comments and all of the work that's been done by staff. But I do believe that the Rocky Point community should be included in this. I think they're kind of the poster child for what, you know, this type of land use update can benefit. I mean, they could be benefiting from all of this. So the fact that it's not excluded, you know, it's a little, it's a little disturbing to me that it should be because I think they're ripe for this kind of, this kind of change. But, but other than that, you know, the work's gone into it. Commissioner Seaman had a lot of great comments that, and I think we kicked this down the road to this particular meeting. So I think it's all heading in the right direction, but I, you know, I would, I would be open to including Rocky Point in this. If not, they deserve some property tax money back if they, if they don't get included in this.
Commissioner Seaman.
I would say as far as, well, I guess, okay, so this one is for Evan. But, so as Commissioner Lau said, these policies that we're moving forward with as far as FAR and whatnot, will they not be able to be utilized until the LDC is complete? And if so, when will that be? So people who are thinking, you know, "I can, I can use these sort of density bonuses once, you know, this is approved," may not actually be able to do so. And then, so when would they actually be able to do so?
So we thought we'd make it extra complicated by having a full-scale code update while also doing a comp plan and right around the same time. But actually, what we'll be doing is for most of the major changes, major concept changes, we will be bringing code, for lack of a better term, we'll call it interim code. We'll be bringing code, we will be amending the existing Chapter 27 to implement those. So the bonuses have to be implemented that way, the mixed-use categories have to be implemented that way. There are a number, there's the density rounding provisions, we need to have code language around that. We actually were discussing this last week with legal. So we've got a laundry list. We also do this every year with, with the legislature, you know, so they have their changes that we're gonna have to make in our code as well. So it is not the cleanest way to do it, but I think ultimately we are working very closely with our consultants on the land development code. They are very well aware and already thinking about where these different pieces are gonna go. But we will move something forward. We're talking, we call it the July cycle of our code amendments. So we're looking at, you know, landing very close to when the actual code become, or when the plan becomes effective. So that's the goal.
Okay, so in theory, if everything goes according to plan, maybe by July, people could utilize these provisions?
This plan won't be adopted by July, so I think we're talking more end of year.
Yeah, the comp plan probably won't be effective until the fall.
Okay.
Right.
And that, and the land development code amendment should line up with that is the goal.
And that would enable most of those major concepts.
Okay. And also, I would like to sort of echo what Commissioner Lau said. You know, I think that staff has done an incredible job. And also, I'm really proud of the amount of diversified comment that has gone into this and feedback that you guys have received and worked with. I think oftentimes, there are a few people with really loud voices. And I think that you guys have made it a point to really listen to everyone and consider everyone's opinions. And I think that that's what makes good planning and really helps to improve our community. So thank you for that.
All right, Commissioner Linkus.
I just want to echo some of these comments. This has been a tremendous amount of work that's apparent to me. I teach urban planning, I teach land use planning at USF. And for many years, I have taught land use planning by actually bringing up the city of Tampa plan and as a contrast to how not, not functional that was. And I often bring up other plans for fast-growing southern cities that face a lot of the same kind of challenges about preserving neighborhoods, about needing to link transportation and land use, about dealing with coastal high-hazard areas as what, you know, I show other plans that could do that well. And I have to say, I will be really showing Tampa's moving forward if this goes forward as a plan that does all of those things and really addresses all the challenges that our fast-growing city does face. So I think this is a phenomenal job. There's a really tough balancing act that has to happen here. But I think you all do, did a really good, really, really great job. And I'm just gonna bring up a few things that I think are commendable here. And I do think that quite a lot of the, some of the concerns that were addressed here today are going to be and appropriately well-addressed in the land development code. And I also agree that that's a tremendous amount of work to do these side by side. And it shows a real respect for the community, the development community, the property owners, that you've worked so hard to achieve these together. But I just want to say, back in, I think it was 2021, I actually was sitting in the same role previously as a planning commissioner. And we had a study presented to us about the CHHA. And we looked, a study was presented to us about regionally, kind of what is being done in the CHHA. And that actually inspired some personal interest that I'm doing as a, as a planning researcher. And I've looked across the codes and the plans throughout the state of Florida. And all the larger, fast-growing communities do, are increasingly allowing some development in the coastal high-hazard area. So I do commend this plan for beginning to look at that for the first time and having some flexibility there. Like, we heard from Michael Moreno and Westshore, that the bay is why we're here, why people love living here. At the same time, as someone who has studied this, I do know that the state's policies for the CHHA are all about evacuation safety, are all about infrastructure, being resilient. And I think that the thoughtfulness around kind of putting carefully thought-out locations in place and having limitations on where development can occur in the coastal high-hazard area make a lot of sense. So I feel like it was very well done to kind of really identify the places where you could look at resilient infrastructure and appropriately think about where people will be safe, where property will be safe, where public investments will be manageable and resilient. So I think that was really carefully done and impressive. Couple other things, I just want to note that there's an attention to affordability for housing. We do know we need more housing, we do know we need more affordable housing. But the smart way that this was done was it's linked to density bonuses, flexibility, job centers and transit opportunity. This is, is really good planning where all of these things are coming together and it's not done in any kind of way that feels arbitrary. It's very well thought out and seamlessly together. And the way that you can see the transit corridors and the way that the whole region and how transit and land use work together is very plain to me. And the plan, it reads persuasively to show you a story of the future of what Tampa would look like. I think it expands and advances property rights, the density bonuses. There's about simplifying, clarifying, and augmenting development rights in many ways through these revisions to the land use categories that I think is very sensitive and thoughtful. The context-sensitive neighborhoods are really careful about the pressures of redevelopment. And I, as someone who lives up in Temple Terrace and works at USF, I think the new attention to the fowler area, which is often an overlooked part of Tampa's economic story and housing story, is really important and overdue, and I'm happy to see it here. And I think there's just a lot of thoughtfulness about the public benefits that will be associated with development to ensure quality of life. So I think it's really an impressive work. I think that there will be some pieces in the land development code that will need to be ironed out. But I think that there's a lot of care and sensitivity to balancing the challenges that have, are on the table in Tampa. So I will be proudly teaching this plan if it moves ahead.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Bowden.
Well, I start off by commending the staff, the community, and the development, development, developers, community, because everyone worked together to actually make this what it was versus what it was, you know, a month ago, for that. Also, I echo all of my fellow commissioners, because next time I'll have my comments first, that way. But I think it was great, pretty much answered the question that I asked last month about, you know, the, the, what was the number, what was the possibility of what you could do in the CHHA? And can, did you really fully utilize that? So without any prohibitions on the present state of that area, people can be, the developers now be, take, think out of the box, and how can I meet the, how can I utilize these areas to maximize my development and the rights of, for that particular properties? So once again, I commend you for all the hard work that you put in for this.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Bowden. I had a quick question, because everybody's kicking that 2016 city of Tampa plan. Did that plan not win an award back in 2015 when I first got on it? I remember going to New York and the APA National Conference, and what was that award for?
It did, it, oh, it was, it was an APA National Award for Sustainability.
So weird, strange, huh? Interesting.
No, no, it was the, it was the overall.
That's how long I've been doing this, by the way, 2015, y'all, so. But yeah, I remember winning that award. So are there any other questions, comments, discussion items from the commissioners before we take our vote? I think we're gonna do a roll call vote on this one, clerk, just to keep things regular. Are there any comments, discussions going once, going twice? Commissioner Lau?
I heard a lot of great comments regarding specific section changes and particularly from the development community. And reading through those, some of those were actually ones that I had earmarked. And I would encourage y'all to do what you always do, which is show up at city council and have some of those same conversations as this progresses.
Absolutely, good point. All right, are there any more comments, discussion items from the commissioners? Not seeing any at this point in time. I'm gonna go on ahead and close down the public comment on this item and open it up to motions from the commissioners. Commissioner Buzo.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Kudos to staff. This was a balancing act. I'd like to move that we find TACPA 24-04 FLU, consistent with comprehensive. that we find TACPA 24-04 FLU, consistent with comprehensive plan afforded on Tampa City Council.
All right. Commissioner Lauk?
Could I respectfully ask Commissioner Buzza to amend his recommendation to include Rocky Point?
I will amend my motion to include Rocky Point.
I'll second it.
Can I just clarify that that's to add Rocky Point as a coast, in the coastal development area?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. We have a motion of consistency finding with the addition of Rocky Point in the coastal development areas. My Commissioner Buzza, second to that motion by Commissioner Kona. Are there any questions, discussion items, clarifications need about commissioners? Commissioner Linkus?
I'd have reservations supporting that. I just think the, what staff really explained, the sort of ingress and egress issues. I do understand that the state CHHA regulations are about evacuation hazards. I'm certainly open to something where we looked at Rocky Point in the future if we had more information. But to me, that feels extremely rushed and not aligned with the state direction of CHHA.
All right. Thank you for the comments, Commissioner Linkus. Any other comments, questions, clarifications? Again, I'll remind everyone, it's a motion of consistency finding, adding Rocky Point to the coastal development areas. My Commissioner Buzza, second to that motion by Commissioner Kona. All right. And I'll kick it over to the clerk for our roll-call vote on that.
Bowden?
Yes.
Cardenas?
Yes.
Buzza?
Yes.
Kona?
Yes.
Cress? Sorry. Linkus? Sorry, I need a second here. No. Lauk?
Yes.
Seben?
Yes.
And Joseph?
No.
Motion carries six to do. Commissioners Linkus and Chair Joseph voted no.
All right. Carrie, okay.
Chair, Chair Joseph, could, is there any way to like note that the concern that I had was around the Rocky Point addition? I don't know if that's inappropriate.
Not really. You'd have, we'd have to take a vote on sending a letter with it, wouldn't we, or something like that? And it's already?
Yeah, that's probably more than needs to happen.
Yeah. I don't think you're gonna win that vote anyway.
Well, I mean, I think you're on the record. And if anybody was to ask us about that, we can articulate that in briefings and such.
Seems to be staff standpoint, too. So, they're probably gonna say something about that when they get to city council, you know, that's, so. It's Tampa City Council. Don't, don't get too excited over it. Yeah, just, yeah. Let's, let's, let's continue on. Our next item of business is 2C, TACPA 2501, Comprehensive Plan Map Amendment, 3606 West Beta Bay Boulevard. And the presenter is Emily Phelan.
Emily Phelan, Planning Commission Staff, this is TACPA 2501, located at 3606 West Beta Bay Boulevard. This is privately initiated, small scale, approximately 0.14 acres. And the request is to go from residential 10 to residential 20. It's located in the South Tampa Planning District and the Palmasia Neighborhood, as you can see in the south of the map. This is an aerial of the subject site, which is outlined in pink. To the west and north and south of the subject site are all single-family detached residences. As you move to the east across Heim's Avenue, there's a mix of commercial uses, like more neighborhood commercial uses, and a place of religious assembly is here. This is looking at the subject site. This is looking east on West Beta Bay Boulevard at the adjacent property. This is looking north on West Beta Bay Boulevard, as you can see that a single-family detachment has pointed out earlier. This is looking west on West Beta Bay Boulevard. This is looking north on West Santiago Street, which is directly behind the subject site. And this is at the southwest corner of West Beta Bay Boulevard and South Heim's Avenue, which is directly to the east of the subject site at the corner, two lots down. This is the adopted future land use map. The subject site is outlined in black. It's primarily surrounded by residential 10, future land use designation. Two lots to the east on the corner of Beta Bay and Heim's is the residential 20. That was as a result of a plan amendment from 2018. And moving further east, you can see the pink color, which is community mixed use 35. This is the proposed future land use map. The subject site is outlined in black and represented with a residential 20 designation. Under the existing residential 10 designation, the subject site could be considered for one dwelling unit or just over 1,700 square feet of non-residential uses if locational criteria is met. Under the proposed residential 20, the subject site could be considered for two dwelling units or just over 2,400 square feet of non-residential uses if locational criteria is met. The amendment would result in higher density and greater commercial intensity. Even though both designations of residential 10 and residential 20 still have to meet locational criteria, under the residential 20, the locational criteria is broadened slightly. Planning Commission staff reviewed numerous policies to formulate a finding. The site would promote infill, and it would ensure an adequate housing supply would be available for Tampa's present population. Though these policies would support the request, the overall request is inconsistent with these objectives and policies that are located on the slide. It's not compatible with the surrounding area, as it is mostly single-family detached. And it would not provide a transition in density, as this would create a pocket of our 20 further west. With that, Planning Commission staff recommends that the proposed map amendment be found inconsistent with the goals, objectives, and policies in the Tampa Comprehensive Plan. If you have any questions, I'm available.
Does the applicant have a presentation? Please.
So, I'll make it short and sweet. You know, it's too late. So, as Emily mentions, proposed future land use change from R10.
Sir, can you please state your name for the record?
What was that?
State your name for the record.
Oh, sorry. My name is Sam, last name Kerry Meehan. So, I'll just pass this. So, there is comprehensive plan goals that I listed here. Smart growth, sustainability, and resilience, without going through, so if we have to, we'll come back to this slide. Affordable housing, transportation, connectivity, economic vitality, community character, and public engagement. I don't see anything against any of these by changing this to R10 to R20. So, this is how it looks like from my camera. So, my objective is to present a rationale for changing the FLU designation from R10 to R20. Why I'm doing it, because my goal is to make it a home office. And, you know, in, in this here, there's gonna be, I'm gonna highlight the benefits and alignments with community development trends. As you see, this is how it looks like. The, the, the house, actually, two houses down, they changed the FLU as well as rezoning in 2019, the corner one. And my neighbors also, I talked with them, they are all in favor of changing it, because this area probably was, you know, suitable for residential use, like 60 years, 70 years ago, but not anymore. And it's best to, you know, make it like a office, home office, probably. And practically, you cannot really build multifamily or condos or apartments in this place. So, this is how it looks like from above. And this is how it looks like from front. And this, looking to the east, this is Bay. Through the camera, front of the house. And this is how the surrounding places are, like offices, mixed use, everything on, on this side. This is the property here. There is something I found right in front of me. It's yoga studio or something. There is like places, they, they're getting Airbnb, because people cannot really live here. And this, this place on the corner, like I said, rezoned four, five years ago. So, I, I believe it's gonna be reduced density. The reason is because it's gonna be 9 to 5 p.m. practically. It's not feasible to build anything that increases density in this place. So, there's not gonna be anyone living after 5. That's good for neighbors. I talked with the neighbor behind, and they, they really like it. There's gonna be no, no traffic on the weekends, no traffic on holidays. And so, why, why, actually, I, I started thinking about it, is the challenges of, you know, living in a high noise level from proximity to a busy intersection and traffic light. Privacy and safety is concerned, especially if you have a little child that I have. And, you know, impact is difficulties in maintaining a peaceful residential environment, especially for families. And this is how, I don't know if you can hear it. This is just a very, not, not very loud car passing by. So, it's almost impossible to sleep like after 9, 10 p.m. So, I'm sure all these places, they, they will be happy to also, you know, change the future land use. It will be a nice transition for the houses behind, you know, this street. So, I think it's, like I said, good alignment with surrounding land uses, neighborhood trends, shift from residential to commercial use between Dale Mayberry and Heim's. This area, Bay to Bay, is really underdeveloped. And I think there is a lot of opportunities to grow, like speaking of growing city, I don't see, I don't think this place has, this street has changed in past, I don't know, 50 years, probably. Existing offices and a church within the block exists. So, it's not like the block, the entire block is residential. And also, after Heim's, there are predominantly commercial properties beyond, beyond Heim's, all the way to the Bay Shore. And this is the current land use, as Emily also showed. This is where the property is. And this is the one that rezoned recently. This is current zoning. And I just skipped comprehensive plan goals because I went through it. So, there is like, in my opinion, there would be economic development also. It can attract small businesses, increase property tax revenue, improves land use efficiency, attract investment in infrastructure and maintenance, reduce residential turnover, and encourages intrapreneurial growth. So, I propose, the, the proposed FLU change offers reduced density, aligns with neighborhood trends, and supports city planning initiatives. And I would urge you, please, to approve my FLU change from R10 to R20. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir. All right. We didn't have anyone sign up in the public comment for this one. So, I will turn it over to Planning Commissioners. Commissioner Seben.
Hi. I couldn't agree with your presentation more. I think this portion of Beta Bay between Dale Mayberry and Heim's, I honestly think it's a little bit dangerous to have single-family homes there, just with the amount of traffic. And I'm sure the noise, I, it always amazed me that people lived there safely. And I think that backing out of your driveway in that location is probably very dangerous. I realize that, you know, we might be in sort of a spot zoning situation here. But maybe we can encourage Planning Commission staff to look at this, you know, that section of that corridor for a future land use change, because I also believe that it should be, you know, commercial or townhomes or something more conducive to a little bit higher density than single-family homes. And I realize it's not a transit-ready corridor. And I think, you know, as designated in, in the future land use element that we were just talking about. But, and I understand why, because, you know, west of Dale Mayberry is, is much more residential primarily. But east of Dale Mayberry is, is much more commercial. And I think-
And also, the traffic turning from Dale Mayberry. Oh, I'm sorry.
Whoa, whoa, whoa. It's our turn to speak.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I do think also, and I think you mentioned, the, the neighboring property to the east of this property is utilized as an office as well. So, anyway, those are my comments.
Thank you, Commissioner Seben. Are there any other comments? Do you want to respond?
I, I would just mention that while it's not a transit-ready corridor, it would be under the R10 on one of the corridors where it would be allowed for consideration of the townhomes now, and that rounding up under the, what you just moved forward.
Right.
Potentially. So, it is, because it would be along a collector. So, it is, it is because it's on the exterior of the neighborhood and all of that. So, there is that recognition. But certainly, that is a corridor segment that we could look at in the future for a land use change.
All right. Commissioner Buzza?
Unfortunately, I have to disagree with my fellow commissioner. I think that, you know, we have the property rights issue of single-family in this neighborhood. The fact that Beta Bay has grown to be such a monster, we've already opened the door, apparently, in prior planning board meetings, to move the corner to R20. This is, touches none of those zoning categories or future land use categories. And you, by approving what you would call a spot zoning, which I think is terrible, but idea, because it opens that door to all of this here that is single-family residential. Unless the neighborhood is willing to get together inside en masse, they want to do it, you're impinging on the rights of your neighbors there. So, I will be supporting, I'll be supporting staff on this.
All right. Commissioner Lauk?
I agree with both of you guys. Actually, I think we're talking about two separate and distinct topics. And so, when it's time to make a motion, hopefully, we can parcel those two things out separately. Because Beta Bay is an area that needs further study. And it's very clear that this parcel isn't designated correctly, as it sits today, and nor any of the parcels in that area.
Thank you, Commissioner Lauk. Yes, Commissioner Cardenas?
Yeah, I've been involved in a few transactions over there. And, you know, there are properties over there that are operating as commercial or operating as office, and even in some instances as retail. But their zoning or their, their land use is whatever it is, but they're still operating in that format. So, it's definitely a gray area. I'll say that.
All right. And I'll just say, I tend to probably side with Commissioner Seben a little more. I was, now, when we talked in our briefing, I talked about the fact of it being kind of a spot. But now, I was thinking to myself, since we put that one on the corner, and that area, to Commissioner Buzza's statement, is changing, we haven't had those discussions, but I have had those discussions. The area is changing and probably will be studied coming up here soon. Isn't there a distance from the corner that we use when we're dealing our corner stuff, where this, you know, obviously, that's not the situation here. I'm asking when it is a corner, and we're looking at that thing. We don't just look at right on the corner. We always often think about, you know, kind of 100 feet, 200 feet back from the corner. What is that?
I, I don't believe that there is a distance in the city's plan from the corner. That's in the county's plan.
County, okay.
Yeah. But Emily, feel free to clarify.
Emily Phelan, Planning Commission Staff, for the locational criteria within the City of Tampa, we do not look at that, not a distance. We do have in R20, the distance from a collector. But since this is on an arterial, that wouldn't necessarily apply on this site.
Okay. All right. Are there any other comments, questions? And I'll remind anyone making motions, if you're making a motion against staff, you're gonna need some policies to make that motion. So, I see Ms. Orin need his fingers working already to look up some of those, just in case. Fortunately, I don't have to worry about that. So, but to those who would make motions, just know that you'll need a couple of policies to go with it if you're going against staff. I'll go to you, Commissioner Buzza.
I'd like to make a motion to-
Whoa, 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 it's not, it's not motion time yet. Calm down, jumper. No, we're still, public comment's still open. Yeah, I was just letting everybody know that when the time comes, that they're gonna need policies if they're gonna be the one to make a motion against staff. So, give them a little bit of time to, Commissioner Linkus?
I'll just say, I, I share a lot of the sentiments here and kind of some of the mixed feelings. I do, I just want to commend the applicant, that I think he did a really terrific job of laying out the case. But I, I do have to share my fellow commissioners' concerns about the property rights for the residential uses in the area. And I do think it's a great opportunity for the community to come together and work with the Planning Commission to look more broadly at what can be done in this area.
Do you want to comment from him? Or do you just want to let that statement lie? It's up to you. It's up to you. Okay, go ahead.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. So the property next to me, they also considered it. But then, because they have a little kid, they just thought it's not worth waiting for a year to rezonate, so they dropped the application. They started it, but they didn't want to move forward.
Thank you. Commissioner Lauk.
Protocol question. If we were to make a motion independent of this, when would we do it to direct staff to study this area and come back by a date certain time with its analysis?
That would be after we make the motion on this, I guess. We could do it, I mean, if you wanted to so do something like that.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Any other, yeah, I wanted to commend you on the presentation, too. I thought it was very good. I was kind of leaning with staff at first. Now, when you started talking about it, and I thought about the fact that there are no neighbors here complaining, and usually there are a lot of neighbors here complaining, and we didn't get any emails. And what I know about the area and the future of the area and stuff like that, I, you know, it made the case very well. I thought you did a very good job, so kudos on that, for what that's worth. Any other comments, questions, statements from the commissioners? Not seeing any at this time. I'm gonna go on ahead and close down the public comment and open up the floor to motions. Commissioner Seaborn.
I'd like to make a motion to find TACPA 25-01 consistent with the comprehensive plan, given policies 1.3, 1.3.1, and 1.3.4.
Second.
And those are of the housing element.
1.3, 1.3.1, and 1.3.4. All right. And that is a consistency finding, consistency motion from Commissioner Seaborn. And a second to that consistency motion by Commissioner Kona citing 1.3, 1.3.1, and 1.3.4. Are there any thoughts, comments, questions, clarifications needed from the commissioners before we vote? I guess we should do a roll call vote on this one, because it's, it mixed up also, so. To the clerk for the roll call vote.
Bowden.
No.
Buzza.
No.
Cardenas.
Yes.
Kona.
Yes.
Linkus.
No.
Yes.
Seaborn. Joseph. Motion carries five to three. Commissioners Bowden, Buzza, and Linkus voted no.
All right. All right, next, oh, Commissioner Lauk, yeah, you wanted to.
Thank you, sir. If it pleases the chair, I would like to make a motion recommending we ask staff to investigate, explore this area, and determine its future land use considerations from the intersection of, it was called out and I didn't get a good note.
She's looking.
Anybody have good cross streets we can put in there from a directional standpoint? Dale Mayberry to Himes with a date certain, so I would ask our esteemed director what date she would want to commit to to come back before the body and give a readout. Signing up for work, Melissa.
Well, would you, just a report on what we think should be done? Or do you want the amendment? Are you asking for a date that we would be bringing forward the amendment to be changed, to have it changed by?
I would like to hear your recommendation before we drop an amendment.
A report.
I'd like a report.
Okay.
But with detailed study and what would, what would your recommendation be? And then we can go from there as a body.
Hold on, David said he sent me a message.
Staff is out there anxiously waiting to see any deadline this.
By the end of the year? Does that sound fair?
I can live with that.
Okay.
There's a lot going on in the city of Tampa right now.
Yeah, I'm just a little cautious about it.
Keep in mind.
And it wouldn't be tech.
That's six months.
Report of uses is really what we're looking for.
Yeah, what we would propose in terms of the plan amendment changes.
What the future should look like in that specific area, what are the current uses.
And I'd be willing to second that.
Okay.
All right. Yeah, Tracy?
Question. If I'm reading one of the maps in one of the other packets correctly, excuse me, you were looking at the area between Manhattan and Dale Mayberry. Manhattan and Himes is across...
Between Dale Mayberry and Himes.
On Bay to Bay, yeah.
Just wanted to be sure we had the right street.
Okay, yep.
All right, so we have a motion to direct Planning Commission staff to bring us a report back on that area after they study it. Second to that motion by Commissioner Buzza. Are any questions from the Planning Commissioners before we take our vote? I guess, should we do a roll call vote? Yeah, let's do a roll call vote on this one also, just in case.
Bowden.
Yes.
Buzza. Kona.
Yes.
Linkus.
Yes.
Lauk.
Yes.
Seaborn. Yes. Joseph.
Yes.
Motion carries nine to zero.
All right. Thank you very much. Thank you, Commissioner Lauk. All right. Next up, we have, where are we almost? Okay, 2D, TACPA 2503, comprehensive plan text amendment, CBD periphery bonus. And the presenter is Danny Collins.
Good evening. Danny Collins with your Planning Commission staff. Today I'll be presenting TACPA 2503. This is related to the CBD periphery bonus in the Channel District CRA. Before I get started, I just wanted to clarify that this was reviewed under the adopted plan and not the proposed language that we reviewed earlier today. The request is privately initiated. It seeks changes to the CBD periphery bonus specifically within the Channel District CRA boundary as of January 1st, 2025. Here's a slide kind of just showing the history of the CBD periphery. So the CBD periphery was established under the 1989 comprehensive plan. Its purpose was to create a transitional area that supports higher-density residential and mixed-use development compared to other parts of the city. So it was intended to create this transition in density outside of the CBD and the surrounding areas. The bonus award was, has remained unchanged since its adoption in 1989. Here is the original boundaries of the CBD periphery. These boundaries have largely remained the same as well since 1989. Currently, projects within the CBD periphery are limited to 100% of max, of the maximum density intensity permitted within the applicable plan category. As proposed, projects within the Channel District CRA would be eligible for up to 200% increase in density intensity above the current fluke category maximum. Development must meet specific provisions outlined in Section 27-140 of the LDC, and that's the bonus provision section. This is a slide that provides an example of how the existing bonus can be applied. This slide is an example of how the existing bonus could be applied to a 0.47 acre site that's currently designated as RMU 100. So today, without the bonus, it would be, it could be considered for up to 47 dwelling units or approximately 71,656 square feet. Under today's adopted bonus, it could be considered for 94 dwelling units or just over 143,000 square feet. And as proposed, under this text amendment, it could be considered for 141 dwelling units or approximately 215,000 square feet. So as you can see, the maximum dwelling units and maximum square footage is essentially tripling from the byright without the bonus. Here is the adopted future land use map of the Channel District CRA. So as you can see, a majority of the districts today is designated as RMU 100. It's approximately 93% of the district. There are remnants of heavy industrial, which makes about 7% of the district, and those, the heavy industrial remnants are primarily north of East Twig Street. There have been four plan amendments since 2021 converting industrial lands to the RMU 100 designation. This area's experienced a significant transition over the years from like a warehouse industrial district to this more high-density urban mixed-use development pattern. The majority of the district is within the coastal high-hazard area, which is denoted by these, the screen line here. And as you can see, it's immediately adjacent to the CBD, which is to the west of the district. The Planning Commission staff, we reviewed the acreage of the fluke categories within the CHHA. So approximately 88.5%, or 88.5% of the district is currently, the RMU 100 lands is within the CHHA, and then approximately 77.7, the heavy industrials are within the CHHA. The total lands within the coastal hazard area is approximately 7.8%. So this slide kind of just shows the overall impacts of the text amendments on existing RMU 100 lands within the Channel District CRA. As you can see, there is a significant, this would result in a significant increase in the number of dwelling units, as well as the maximum square footage that could be considered through this bonus. So this could potentially add approximately 15,000 units or approximately 22.9 million square feet of residential and/or non-residential development based on the RMU 100 designated lands within the Channel District CRA. So as you can see, this would allow for a significant increase in development potential. We sent this off to our partner reviewing agencies. We received an objection from the city of Tampa's staff. We also received comments from the school board, BT Washington Elementary and Blake High School, common have, you know, identified those schools as being overcapacity at this time. I do want to note that this is an analysis of adequate facilities only and is not a determination of school concurrency. Staff reviewed the request and identified relevant policies that applied to the request. These include policies aligned with the city's compact city form strategy, increasing the housing supply, and encouraging mixed-use development in the district. These were carefully considered in forming our consistency finding. Despite this, staff identified several areas where the request was inconsistent with the comprehensive plan. First, while the proposed, the proposal mimics a development pattern similar to the CBD, it could result in incompatible development within the Channel District. The request would allow tripling the current future land use category maximum, creating a scale and significantly, a scale that's significantly greater than existing developments in the district. In my report, I noted several developments. For one, one was Bell Channel side, which was approximately a 2.07 FAR. There were a few others as well. And, you know, as you can see, those are developed at a 2.07. This would allow up to a 10.5. So there are those massing and scale concerns with this request. Staff also noted that this request essentially functions as a spot amendment, benefiting a small group of undeveloped parcels in the district, which already qualify for the city's most generous density bonus. The Channel District today receives a higher bonus reward than other areas of the city at a cheaper cost to developers. Second, the request does not fully support the broader policy objectives related to housing affordability in the plan. The plan prioritizes providing a variety of housing types for moderate, low, and very low-income individuals. Land use policy 9.9 and its associated, or land use objective 9.9 and its associated policies encourage mixed-income residential neighborhoods downtown. Housing policy 1.1.5 specifically encourages affordable housing through density bonuses. While the request could increase housing units in the Channel District, it does not include any requirement or commitment to provide affordable housing. This policy could result in much larger, less affordable housing units, conflicting with the overall policy direction regarding housing affordability in the plan. Finally, the request conflicts with policy guiding, policies guiding population growth away from the coastal hazard area. This bonus could introduce over 13,000 units or about 20.2 million square feet of housing within the coastal hazard area. We did note that, you know, that was based on the entire district and that, you know, that may come later on at some point, you know, 20, 50 years from now, so. But I just, I did want to include that statistic in our report because it is important. In conclusion, while the request aligns with some overarching growth strategies, the identified inconsistencies regarding compatibility, housing affordability, and public safety outweighed the benefits of offering a substantially larger bonus in an area that is already eligible for the city's most generous bonus. I do want to note as well, this is not introducing any new public benefit to the city and is essentially just asking for a higher, higher density and higher intensity. And based on those considerations, the Planning Commission staff recommends that the proposed map amendment be found inconsistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the Tampa comprehensive plan. That concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Does the applicant have a presentation?
Good evening. Truitt Gardner, 400 North Ashley Drive. Certainly appreciate Danny's comments. As you might imagine, we've got a difference of opinion, as does the Channel District CRA. With me is Addie Clark and Ken Stoltenberg. And if I might, as mentioned, we're here to focus on the Channel District CRA. As you can see here, slightly different map than what Danny showed. It's a subset of the overall CBD periphery bonus that you can see in purple. And then in yellow is the overall boundary of the entirety of the CBD periphery bonus. Just history of the Channel District. I've actually had the fortune of being involved from the beginning. At the beginning, 2004 is when the CRA was established. And at that time, really, you had the Central Business District and you had the Channel District. The Channel District was a, was a kind of abandoned, derelict warehouse area. The thought was to keep it lower in density. There were lots of distinctions between the CBD and the Channel District. The third bullet points really kind of sums up the way things were in 2004. It was an aging industrial area with declining investment and few residents. Since that time now, not only have you had the Channel District grow magnificently, but also since then, Channel District was in the lead. Ebor Harbor, Gas Works, Encore, Tampa Heights, and then the one that changed everything is immediately to the south with Water Street and the great development that's occurred there. And then two slides, Danny mentioned spot zoning. I think that's exactly the point. There's just a few tracts of land available to be developed in the Channel District. And I think Mr. Stoltenberg will testify and has got expertise on why it's so difficult to develop that and why this additional density is needed. What's shown here in red represents less than 10% of the property within the confines of the Channel District CRA. And those are underutilized lands. That's defined as lands where the building is actually less in value than the property that is underneath it. And then with this slide, it's 1.4% of the property left within that Channel District CRA is actually vacant. And so there's smaller parcels, tougher to develop, impractical to develop at a 7.0 FAR, which is what's necessitating this request. And then I think this is interesting. This shows in the larger circle, the CBD, there, it's in the coastal hazard area. You have no zoning constraints that goes in front of city council, and you have absolute unlimited density. Whereas you cross the street and these lines are blurred, one with Water Street, two, the flour mill has been taken down, three, the rail line has been removed. So really, those lines between the CBD and the Channel District have been blurred. And currently, not only do you not have unlimited density, but you're capped at a seven. And our request would take it to a 10.5, which we think is justified and justifiable. And with that, I'll turn things over to Addie and then to Ken to close. But thank you for your time and consideration, for staff's too.
Good evening. Addie Clark, 400 North Ashley Drive. So Truitt went over this. So basically, today we're asking for a 10.5 FAR. We are not asking for unlimited density, although unlimited density exists just west of the Channel District. So here, this map shows the majority of the Channel District CRA in pink or purple, and CBD in maroon just to the west. As you can see from these yellow stars, most of those are existing development. As you can see from these yellow stars, most of those are existing developments and some are planned with the asterisks. And this option would be able to bonus up to a higher FAR would be entirely compatible with the surrounding area. And I just wanted to focus on the Aura, which you can see there, is shown as a greater than 13.0 FAR. Once that comes online, that's proposed just less than 500 feet west of the Channel District. And again, it won't be subject to any FAR maximum. And so again, not asking for that unlimited, but just asking for that slight increase. And so here, even though the Channel District Community Redevelopment Plan, it does note that the Channel District is to provide for growing mixed uses that complement the surrounding area, which we believe is the CBD. And so this graphic shows again how, just how close the central, or excuse me, the Channel District is to the CBD, including Water Street Phase 1 and Phase 2, and proposed development just on the other side of Meridian. As we went over, you can see Aura there. And we do believe that Water Street is a great example of mixed use done well. And so we are proposing that opportunity for the mixed abuse, mix, a better mix of uses at a higher density just west here in Channel District. And a major difference, we've touched on it now a couple of times, but between the CBD and the Channel District is that the CBD periphery bonus can only be achieved, one, through a binding site plan, and two, through a bonus provision agreement that is subject to city council approval. So as you know, it's during the rezoning process when details such as buffering, access, transportation, shelter mitigation, those very important components are all heavily scrutinized and must be provided for. And so we thought a safety net was a, a good analogy there. And here, like Danny mentioned at the start of his presentation, this is not subject to the 2045 plan, which y'all just heard of. But we thought it would be important to take a look at that. So Channel District, in that 2045 plan, Channel District is contemplated as a coastal development area as well as a regional activity center, which is sandwiched in between two arterial roadways where growth is intentionally being directed. And now looking at the comprehensive plan that is adopted today, there are multiple policies that support this request. I won't read all of them, given the time, but just did want to point out land use policy 3.5.4, which encourages the continued efforts to promote mixed-use residential infill redevelopment at various densities in the Channel District. And then the one, the third one, 9.4.1, encouraging higher density multifamily development in pedestrian-oriented urban areas with access to transit, which we all know the Channel District is that. And then finally, land use policy 9.9.5, that last one on the bottom, recognizes how downtown and the Channel District CRA are more blended now than ever and encourages opportunities to, opportunities for incentives to direct growth where it does make sense. And now I'll introduce Ken Stoltenberg.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Ken Stoltenberg. My office is at 1810 West Kennedy Boulevard. And I reside at 1208 East Kennedy, which is in Grand Central of Kennedy. So I live in the Channel District. I've been working there for going on 23 years now. And Truitt was right, when we started there in 2003, it didn't look, didn't look at all like it does right now. The reason that we're proposing this is frankly, we've had several inquiries in the district for mixed-use condominium hotels. One of the ones that Addie just mentioned, Aura, wanted to go into the Channel District. They had the property, two properties on Twig Street under contract, A&amp;D Automotive and Sandra Dickey's Building, perhaps two of the ugliest buildings that are still there. And we met with staff, they were looking for a 14 FAR and staff, some members of staff just didn't like that at all. They went across the street, literally across the street. That means the Channel District missed out on about $250 million of development. Just think what that type of development would have done to all the retail that's already there. That includes people like public supermarkets, CVS Drugs, and Crunch Fitness. We've come back with a proposal of 10.5 because another property that I'm involved in at the corner of Whiting and Channel Side, right across from where all the cruise ships go, would also like to do a mixed-use condominium hotel. And they need extra density to do it. That's why we're proposing this. If you want to have a condo hotel in the Channel District, that's exactly where you would want it, right near all the cruise ships, which is something that, you know, didn't wither on the vine like everybody thought 10 years ago. It's actually expanded. The reason that, the other reason that I think this is positive is the Channel District is certainly an area that we want growth. It's sandwiched in between the CBD and Gas Works and Water Street. Would those developments be happening right now if the Channel District not led the way? Who knows? Probably less of a chance than is currently there. So this is one of those things where the CAC, which is the Citizens Advisory Board, at their March meeting proposed to city council that the same density parameters and approval parameters that are presently in use in the CBD be adopted for the Channel District because the Channel District has essentially become part of the Central Business District. You used to have a flower mill, you used to have a rail yard that sat between the two. Those are gone. And, you know, while, you know, there are some members of staff and the Planning Commission that maybe want to keep it the way it was, that's not smart. You're talking about, you know, redoing the comprehensive plan to allow for more growth in areas where it wants to happen and where it should happen. There's no debate in the Channel District as far as density or height or anything like that. That's why people live there. That's what they want. So I would urge you to, you know, think a little bit as far as not looking back at what the Channel District was when they built Bell Channel Side almost 20 years ago, when the land was bought for $10 a foot from the city of Tampa. $10 a foot. Little bit different now. So this makes sense. And, you know, unfortunately, we've got some opposition from staff in both the city and here. But quite frankly, I just think they're wrong, big time. So I would advise you to think about this as what Tampa should look like 10, 20 years from now, not what it looked like 10, 20 years ago. Thank you.
All right, we didn't have anyone sign up for the public comment on this item. So it is over to the Planning Commissioners for, Ms. Orne, I see your light on. Did you have? Oh, no, just lighting light, all right. Over to the Planning Commissioners for questions, discussions. Commissioner Seben?
I do have one question. Is this proposal made with all property owners in this, in this section supporting it? Does every property owner have to sign up to be a part of this application?
They do not. The, I, the applicant, can, anyone can propose an amendment to the text and it applies to the area which they have proposed it to apply to. They do not, they are not required to notify the individuals who are within that area that it will change their properties.
Okay, thanks.
Commissioner Orton?
I just want to make a note that according to my staff's report in here that this area is already over capacity with schools. Washington Elementary is at 138%, Stewart Middle is at 90, oh, better put my glasses on, is at 92%. And Blake High School is at 116%. And currently, we have development reservations for all the new developments that are going out there like Gas Works and places such as that. So anything new as far as residential development will require either mitigation, prop shares. They will need to do something or else we will need to hold additional development until we get a new school in those areas. So at 300 dwelling units an acre, we're talking more school sites. We are opening two new schools in that area, one in 27 and one 28, but that still has a silver capacity.
Thank you. All right, Commissioner Lauk?
I had questions around the schools and you answered one of them, which was when are new schools coming online? Are they planned? Are they in flight? The second question I had was, my understanding is Blake is a magnet school. So the high school that this would actually district into, do we have data on that in terms of where it's at from a capacity standpoint?
Blake High School is at 110%.
Right.
Right now. And Stewart is at 92. We are bringing Stewart down and rebuilding it, and it will open in 2027. But it doesn't, Blake, I'm sorry, Stewart has a boundary, but it is a magnet school.
Stewart is a magnet school or Blake?
Stewart is a magnet school.
Okay.
It has a boundary, but it is a magnet school. It is the NASA school.
Okay, got it. Thank you. And Blake is the magnet school, which is the art school.
The art school.
All over the county.
And that one does not have a boundary.
Okay, that's great. Thank you.
All right, were there any other questions, comments, discussion items from the commissioners? I am not seeing any right now. So I'm going to go ahead and close the public comment and open it up to motions from the commissioners on this one. Commissioner Kona?
All right, I'm going to go out on a limb here, but I'm going to make a motion to find TACPA 2503, Comprehensive Plan Text Amendment, consistent with the comprehensive plan based on land use 2.1.2, land use 3.5.4, land use 9.4.1. I just think development in this area is where it needs to be. And the people who are living or coming and staying in hotels and living down in Channel Side, I'm not sure the school capacity thing is that big of an issue.
All right, we have a motion of consistency finding by Commissioner Kona. Citing policies 2.1.2, 3.5.4, and 9.4.1. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, Commissioner Cardenas seconded that motion. Are there any questions, clarifications from the commissioners? I think I'm going to just go ahead and do a roll call vote on this one too, just in case.
Bowden?
No.
Buzzer?
Yes.
Cardenas?
Yes.
Kona?
Yes.
Linkus?
Yes.
Lauk?
Yes.
Seben? And Joseph?
No.
Motion carried eight to two. Commissioners Bowden and Chair Joseph voted no.
Six, six to two.
I'm so sorry. Yes, six to two.
Okay. All right, that was our last agenda item. So at 8:07, this meeting is adjourned. Good night, everyone.